MS4 every five years saying, you know, what's your plan? In fact, they talked about the Laurel Center. That they're holding the water on the site and letting it dribble out.
I couldn't hear you at first. Was this referring to the dredging project?
No, no, but, no, no, no. They're dragging their feet for some reason. But I did ask, what's his name was there from WSSC?
Oh, I don't have time for that.
My commissioner. The smiley one, the engineer, the hydro, hydro. He said that there's only about 10% loss in the dam capacities since they put them. I can't believe it. I really can't believe it. Yeah, I'm gonna send you a letter. I said, I don't want, look, 20 years now, I don't want to just turn up like the cowingos where there's so much stuff they don't know what to do. He said, Mike, we've done the studies. I said, okay, I want to see the studies. All right, that's pretty different.
We did take measurements in Laurel Lakes, the Big Lake.
Yeah.
I think it's about eight feet.
What was it start? We're talking back in. See, I would think that they probably lost 25, 30 percent. But, look, I gotta listen to the engineers. We gotta take their results.
You didn't speak to me, huh, Mike? How are you? I'm just glad law enforcement's here.
She's breathing. Three-year-old. The one that's born.
Which movie theater?
Very great. She's less than two pounds.
The center of the event.
Smart, she's gonna breed now. She's no more body cast, no more.
Which movie theater?
Bought the movie theater on Main Street.
What are we gonna do with it? Tear it down?
Gonna create a pad. What kind of pad? Just to make a lot. Movie theater.
Oh, boy, we got Laurel in here. How are you?
Hi, I'm Mike Lenz.
They got a screen set up in the other room? Where's the key? Yeah, make sure it's on, please.
This work session, our questions about the Laurel Boys and Girls Club. I'll start off to just kind of give you a sense of how this work session is going to be conducted. We sent out in advance to Ms. Lilly a number of questions that were put together by the members of the city council. It's our interest in seeking these responses to get a sense of where the club is going, what the club, the issues and concerns that we have regarding the leadership and management of the club with the sole purpose of understanding how we as a city can work cooperatively with the club for its advancement as it works to improve its service to the residents, the children of this community. Certainly, Ms. Lilly, you and everyone here assembled in this room is aware of the News 4 IT report or reports that have aired. And I, speaking personally, can certainly say, after many, many years of being involved as a councilman with the Boys and Girls Club, I was, I don't want to say necessarily shocked because me personally, and I have no problem in going on record in saying this, that I've had many, many conversations over the years with folks from, associated either formerly or currently with the Boys and Girls Club who have brought certain things to my attention. Unfortunately, those folks generally were not willing to speak publicly. But my, my, my feelings were that this organization has some work to do. I think you and everyone here will agree to that. And we are here as a city seeking some answers with the intent of working with the organization to help it improve. So with that said, these questions we are going to ask so that they can be put on the public record.
Okay.
We will go from councilman to councilmember, asking you the questions. If you would just respond with, you know, as much detail as you can provide us, we would certainly appreciate it. Because this is a work session, we'll follow the general work session protocol, and that is, we will not have questions, statements, or comments from anyone other than yourself. If there are comments or questions that anyone would like to ask, we ask that you provide them in writing to the clerk's office here in the city, and then we will then respond. One of the other things that we would like to go on record in requesting is that we do this kind of, of discussion on a routine basis so that we again can find ways as a city to work with you or work with the organization, again, to work to improve the situation there at the Boys and Girls Club. So, to start, I'll just ask you, if you would, to introduce yourself, tell us who you are, your position with the club, and that sort of thing, please.
Nancy Lilly. I've been in Laurel for the last 13 years. I'm an owner of an engineering firm. I'm an engineer myself. I have like 30-some employees. More than 60% are actually Laurel residents. I have, have four girls. My youngest is eight. She's been with the Laurel Boys and Girls Club for the last two years with cheerleading, baseball. About a year ago, I came to the city a few times, more with the intention of starting a charter school at the Laurel Boys and Girls Club. I was in close contact with Chrissy and with Mr. Craig Moe about the matter. And little by little, I got more involved with the club. And I realized that there were other needs in the club that I had to take care of first, including the building, before I even ventured into a charter school. I was nominated, I was appointed as a president, as a vice president back in April. And when Mr. Levitt Brown stepped down, I became the president of the Board of Directors. The, that was back in April. So I was gonna ask with the permission of, of the councilmembers to allow me that if I need to go back into any questions that have to do with his past history, I don't have it. I could, I answer questions from April moving forward. Anything that's part of the past, I would have to ask Mr. Levitt Brown to answer the best of his knowledge. If that, that's, I'm asking permission to do that, if that's allowed. Or I could answer the best I can and say, I do not know.
If the council agrees, Ms. Lilly, I would prefer that if there are questions that you can answer, that you just tell us you don't know, and then you'll gather the information.
Okay, not a problem.
Yes. Are you, council, you in agreement?
Yeah.
One of the things also that we would like to do is, as you respond to questions, there may be some follow-up questions coming from your, depending on your response to the question. So, just want to make you aware. So we'll start with the first question from Councilman Ricks.
Thank you for coming tonight. We really appreciate this.
You're welcome.
Again, we open to avenues of support from the city. What obligations, if any, has the current club made to anyone regarding reimbursements of funds expended?
Had no reimbursements.
You've had no reimbursements? Have they any been requested?
No. Not that, not under, under me. Not that I know of.
Mr. Levitt Brown went on record as to stating that he took $40,000 out of his personal account.
But these are donations, so I've.
So he made a donation to the club?
Yeah, I've, I've donated money myself. I've, I've asked board members to donate money. So they're donations. I, I don't have in record any outstanding loans for any board member or anybody in the club.
Has he indicated to you that it is a donation, and have you given him a receipt that would indicate that?
The donations that were done before, were done before April 14, so I don't know if he actually has a donation receipt for the donations that he, he made. I actually donated over $4,000, and I got a receipt of a donation for my, for tax purpose. So I.
So there is no record of any donation by Mr. Brown of $40,000?
No. The donations, the donations in the charter of accounts is just donations. It's not by individual. So it comes down into just, you know, I, I could show you the chart of accounts. It's, it's, it's one statement that says donations, and it goes in there. It doesn't specifically say by who.
So there.
So I have no record.
Of him donating $40,000?
Not that I know of. Not in, not in what I know. That's what I'm saying. Since I've been there, I have no, no receipt. I have no, no donation piece of paper going to him. I have heard him saying that he has made donations to the club, as a lot of our board members.
Is there a particular set of books that would deal with donations?
The only thing I have is the chart of accounts that talks specifically donations, and it goes in, in that pool. I don't have anything else.
Was, you may not have anything. Do you know if any existed prior to you getting there?
No. I do not know.
Thank you, Mr. President. I yield.
Councilwoman McCrory?
Thank you. Is there any accountant? This sounds more like a general fund versus a donation fund. Are there any accounting practices in place?
There's, I have not seen accounting policies, and like where I work, there's accounting policies. I don't, I have not seen any accounting policies in place, in written, in writing.
Okay. Out of this donation fund, would normal operating costs come out of this?
I have, if I look at my chart of accounts, what I have is I have operating expenses, which include your electrical, your water, your, everything that had maintenance. And then you have, the chart of accounts has another piece, that's the, that's the expense side. The donations would come in as the income piece for the chart of accounts.
Okay. Under a chart of accounts, like using Quicken as an example, Peachtree, they all.
We use QuickBooks.
Fine. So you would categorize something as income?
Right.
All right? But it goes into the same, the chart of accounts is just what you pull from?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it goes into the bucket of the income, yeah.
So it might say, if you had $10,000 in that account?
Mm-hmm.
Then you just write a check out of that same account and just categorize it lights, water.
Mm-hmm.
So it's coming out of that account, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you know of other income that's going into that account?
The other incomes are like membership fees that come in.
Certainly.
We have donations, like UPS does donations. We've had donations in the past from CarMax. So anything that comes in as revenue into the club goes into that.
And you would just do a Quicken search?
Mm-hmm.
If you wanted to know how much came in in membership fees? How much came in from UPS?
Right.
How much came in from?
Right. Exactly right.
Or generally donations?
Right. And then each program has its own line.
Right. Is there any one person that's in charge of that account?
Mr. Levitt Brown is in charge of the banking account. He sat down with me a few times to make the transition to me. I've, I have not had a treasurer in place since I've been in, as, as the president of the board. The, so the, I've tried a few times to get into QuickBooks, but the number that I've, the number that I've been trying to use has not worked on my computer for some reason. So what I've been doing is sitting down with Mr. Levitt Brown and looking at QuickBooks through his computer.
Is the number the password?
It's the password, yeah. So I personally have not gotten into QuickBooks myself. That we were, I've sat down with him once, and the plan was to transition all of the QuickBooks to go to the bank and make the change to, everything to my name, and then have the treasurer, the vice president, and a few other people on the signing. Because in, in accounting, you have to have checks and balances.
Certainly. Where are the, the QuickBooks are kept on a computer at the club?
It's on, it's, it's on the web. So anybody that has the password could have access to it. So it's not on a server.
Okay. So at this time, Mr. Brown is the only one that has access?
That's correct.
On the web to that?
Mm-hmm.
Who are the other people that have the signature authority? Do you remember at the bank?
A lot of the folks are no longer with the club. So Ms. Harry Cox would be the one making the deposits. And I don't think we have anybody else with a signature, other than Mr., Mr. Levitt, that I know of.
Have the other people been removed as they left?
I don't think so, but I'm not sure. That, I, that piece, I'm still a little new on it. The, it takes, I've been more involved with the, creating an executive board that serves, creating committees, trying to formulate a good fundraising, because the money is what is always tied in the club. So being able to strengthen that. And I say, you know, right now, let's, let's just focus on that. Because without the money coming in, there's not much reason to have, you know, to have the bank, so.
Yeah. Don't, don't misunderstand my questions as judging.
No, I understand.
I'm just trying to get the information.
I understand, no. And you, you could ask all the questions. Like I said, I could answer as much as I know.
Where is the banking occurring?
Physically, you mean?
Yes.
A PNC bank.
PNC bank.
Yeah.
Is that the only bank?
Yes. That's all.
And is that checking and savings?
Checking, savings, and we also have a credit card. The credit card is closed, because the credit card was open under another individual that's no longer with the club. So we only work with debit. We don't work with credit.
Would this be open under a 501(c)(3) organization?
Yes.
And would it be open under their employment identification number, or would you have that?
When you're saying "they," what are you talking?
The EIN number, the checking and savings?
Yes.
The council members are getting sick of hearing my voice right now, so I'm gonna yield the floor to the three of them.
You have good questions.
And hopefully, they let me come back.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Lilly.
You're welcome.
We will. Councilwoman Lenz?
On this topic, let me just, thank you for coming. We just asked one question. When you got a receipt, is there a copy of the receipt in the Boys and Girls Club office somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, so are there copies of all receipts for all donations?
I don't know, because remember, I'm working, starting April 14.
I understand that.
And I put those things in place. Where first, you know, any, any paper that I generate, I want to make sure there's a copy in the office, because it, it's not people-dependent. It should be process-dependent.
Okay, so.
So before that, I do not know.
Have you observed any receipts, copies of receipts?
I have not. No. I've, but, you know, I don't know if it's in somebody's.
The only question I have.
I don't know if it's in somebody's house or not. So I, I know that what I have in the office is what I know has.
April forward.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I have a couple of questions. So with the donation, with, with people that donate, you're saying for someone to give such a large donation, whether it's $5,000, $10,000, on up, there is no receipt provided to that person? Because you would think for someone to donate that amount of money for tax purposes, they would want to write that off on their taxes.
I, I didn't, I said, I donated. I requested a receipt. I got a receipt. I can't speak to what happened with Mr. Levitt Brown, because I didn't ask him if he actually received a receipt. I didn't ask him. So you would have to ask him to see if that receipt, you know, he received it or not. But I could say that I did receive a receipt for the donation that I made.
Okay. My other question is, since you've been there from April the 14th, have you actually seen what's in the bank? The money that's in the bank? Because you said that when you go to QuickBooks, you can only view it with Mr. Brown present, because you don't have the number, access, correct?
Right.
So have you, when you've gone to the bank, have you actually seen the bottom line as to what is available at the club? The money, cash money that they have available?
So as of today?
Mm-hmm.
Because I did that exercise today.
Okay.
I know exactly the amount of money that's in the bank.
Okay. Knowing that, you, do you have access, do you have check-writing authority, or that falls under someone else?
No, Mr. Levitt Brown is the only one that has check-writing authority right now. That, all, all that process was going to be changed to me. And I'd said, only one person should be writing the check. That's how I do it at work. I only, I'm the only one that has signature authority, and I don't like stamps, so.
Okay.
You lose control. But as of right now, that was not done.
Okay, so with the, you're not being able to get into QuickBooks, what is the process now that you have in place? Because you said that you can only view QuickBooks with Mr. Levitt present. I mean, to get access or a passcode is just a matter of writing it down or giving it to someone?
And, you know, I, I think eventually I was gonna get it. I, it just, for some reason, the numbers that I was putting in, or the way I was doing it was not, was not accessing. And because I always had Levitt next to me, or, or on my computer, or his computer, or Mrs. Cox's computer, because it's a web, it's a web access. You could do it from anybody's computer. I always, as long as Mr. Levitt was around, I always had access to it. So it was not a matter of not having access. It was, it was there. It was a matter of inputting, going in. It's sort of like, you know, if you go to Google, you, you do the search, and you're in, and then you could, you could take it from there. So it was about taking it from there, and then doing what, whatever I needed to do. So, and I always, for me, it was questioning, well, what is this? What is that? What is that? And, and getting the answers.
Okay. But at any point from this day forward, since you've been in office, will you have total, will you have access to that, to the QuickBooks on your own, and not with him being present?
I, I, I am. And I want to address the, the council, that we're in the process of a new board, and I'm no longer gonna be the president. I'm gonna be part of the general board. So that's why I, as of right now, I do not have access.
Okay.
Within a week or two, we'll have a new president, a new vice president, a new executive board, a new treasurer, a new, so we'll have a new complete board. A few of the board members, a few of the new nominee, nominated board members and that have accepted are sitting here with me. I invited them. Because today was gonna be our first meeting, and I have the agenda of that meeting, where my new, our new executive board, my new general board was gonna elect their executive board. The meeting was scheduled for today at 7:00. And I, I asked them to come here, because they need to listen to what, what, what's happening. So that's gonna happen. So to answer your question, no, probably not. I think the new treasurer will be the one, that everything will be transitioned to him or her at that time, and they will have access to that. There is a board member that is, he's a, he's a manager at a, at a, I think it's SunTrust. Very good candidates. The new candidates for the, for the executive, for the board are all very strong professional people. So I, I have a lot of hope for this board coming up.
Okay. I'm gonna move on to my next question. The Laurel Prep Academy, does it still exist?
It exists as a program, as a program. And the definition of a program is, as all, like a football or soccer, it has a mission. It has a budget. We're looking at funding, self-funding every one of the programs in the club. So initially, it started as a program. It was looking at taking off as a school. That was when Pastor Tony was asked to see if he could participate. That did not take off. I was part of, I was, I was, it just happened that when all that was happening in April, the, the school didn't take off, and I, and I said, we're leaving it as a program. Because with it, as a program, and the, the main purpose of Laurel Prep School as a program is to sponsor kids that are, that are having a hard time with their GED, or five-year senior kids that have, cannot participate because of their age, and because of their GPA, cannot participate in any sports. So they do the athletic, athletics at the, at the club in partnership with NC, the NCAA, under their, their codes and everything. And what we do, the club, is we bring scouts in during that time that they're there, with the hope that somebody will take them to move them into scholarships for college. That's the whole purpose of that. So as a program, it's really looking at opportunities for them to continue into college with scholarships through the sports.
Okay. Can you tell me, since you're, you said this is a program? How many children are in this program?
We started with eight kids, and we've, we have, I think, like, four right now at Howard Community College with full scholarships.
So it's eight kids? Okay. Do they pay $5,000 to be educated, and where does the money go?
They never paid $5,000, because $5,000 was a fee that was brought about if it was a school. But as a program, they didn't pay anything. So I have signed contracts, but remember, all this happened before I, I came in place. Because the school started September, the program started September 2013. So I have agreements that every student sign as a program. There's no academic piece. There's no school piece. And there's no way, there's no fee. All the fees and everything were waived.
Okay. So, in the program, in the contract that you have the kids to sign, what exactly, is it written out, spelled out? What exactly do they get?
Exactly what they get is an opportunity to play. This is basketball. So, to play basketball, to have coaches come in, scouts come in and witness their games and for mentoring. That's what they sign up for.
That's it?
That's it. I could give you, I have copies of everything. So, if you need copies of anything, please let me know. I have it all here.
I have just a couple of more questions. Are any classes being offered at the main building?
No. What we did was, the NCAA offers an online course for the kids that are having a hard time with their GPAs. So, the club, as a program, purchased three licenses for an online class. It's like, you know, if any kid wants to go get his GED, they could actually go take online classes. You pay $350 and you get, you take online classes to be able to pass your GED. This is a very similar program. You, they're online classes. Some students actually started taking their online classes at home with their computers. All the kids were sent to their local schools. So, I had kids at the Princeton Academy. I had kids in Howard County. I had kids in Laurel High School. So, all the kids pretty much were in their home school, taking their own classes. And what they were doing was after 3:00, they would come to the, to the club and practice basketball. And then the mentors and the coaches would take them. They would have games and they would actually take them to games so they could practice. So, that went on.
Okay. Let me ask you this. You said that you purchased three licenses for online classes. You said you had eight kids that participated. What was the success rate of those online classes? Did every kid pass and they're now, they now?
Three kids. Two kids did nothing with it. One kid, we sent him home because he didn't take anything serious. One kid just could not, his, the baseline of the amount of classes that he had, it just was too much for him. And the third kid is in Howard County Community College right now.
Okay. So, in total, how many kids passed the online course?
One kid. From the three kids, one kid passed. The other five kids, four kids are in Howard Community College right now.
The one, so one kid passed and one is in community college?
I have four, remember, I only had three licenses. So, I only, only three kids that wanted to try the online part did it. All the rest of the kids, most of the kids in that program were going to their local schools. These are kids that, you know, they, for some reason, they didn't take school the way that most of us do for family reasons, for, you name them. And so, now they're 18, 19 and they're still in their senior year. At that age, they cannot participate in any sports at their local school. And they are great athletes. So, the Laurel Boys and Girls Club brought them in at that time. So, they're, most of them are in their schools, their high schools. Some of them, we, the online program that we provided was to support them with the classes that they had missed out through high school. So, they were still in their school and they were still taking some of these online classes.
Okay, this is my last question and then I'm going to.
Sure, not a problem.
I know they're tired of hearing from me. But, I'm trying to understand, you bought three licenses. So, as more students signed up, if you only had three licenses, what would be the fate of those, of new kids coming into the program?
The fate was that the club just didn't have the money for any more licenses. Each license was around $350. So, we bought the three licenses and the first three kids that asked for it were the ones that got it. So, moving forward as a program, one of the things that we're going to be doing is self-funding and we will provide license, more licenses for more kids to have that opportunity. But, at that time, at that moment, that's all the money we can afford.
Okay. Thank you.
It was really based on funding.
Let me ask a follow-up question here. So, I understand this. Some of these kids are still in high school and some are not in high school, correct?
Yes.
And some are working. But, they're playing basketball on this team. Okay? And in my mind, I'm just trying to get my arms around this. Bear with me. These are 18 and 19-year-old kids. Okay? I've listened to a great deal over the last couple of years about programs for the kids, for the children. These are not kids. These are adults.
They're young men, yeah.
They're adults. Okay? I'm just going to make that statement. And, and there's a lot of avenues for those young men that can play basketball. And they've got the thing in DC that they run all summer long. I don't remember what they call that program. But, they put teams together. But, again, I'm having, I'm having trouble in my mind getting my arms around taking funds, program funds, for the young children, the fives and sixes and sevens and eights and tens and twelves and junior high school kids. And to put this team on the floor, to put them on a bus and take them to tournaments. Okay? And I just, it's sort of a statement. I'm not asking you for any decision, any comment. But, I have real, in my mind, I have trouble sort of equating that whole thing. Okay? I mean, I can only relate to my children. When they got to a certain age in high school, they moved out of the Boys and Girls Club, even though my son was playing select soccer. My daughter, when she got, she just moved out of it and went, played with the high school team. Now, you pointed out that for whatever reason, they can't participate in high school.
They can't participate in any, any sports in high school.
Because their grades aren't good enough. They haven't done enough credits.
Right.
But, again, I, again, I'm just making a statement.
I understand.
But, I'm having real problems getting my arms around this facet, this after-school program when we're moving funds from the operation of the organization.
I understand.
Okay? To put a team on the floor. I mean, I've, I go online and I look online. You know, they won against this team. They won against that team.
Yeah. And, you know, I respect, I respect what you say. What I've had the privilege is to know some of these kids. And, you know, they come from broken families. They come from.
I understand that.
Areas that you, you know, you and me probably have never stepped. So, when you see that, you see that. And these are young men that one day will be husbands and that will be fathers and that one day they need, so what the club is bringing to these kids is more than just the opportunity of playing. They're bringing the mentoring. You have, you have, you know, you have very good men, examples of what they could become one day. So, that mentoring program for these kids is important. And, you know, I hear what you're saying, yes. I do understand. That's why the self-funding for every program in the club is important, that they could do fundraising so they could support their own selves in how we're doing this. So, what have we done? We've done a few things. We've partnered with the, with the Job Corps. The Job Corps now has partnered with Laurel Boys and Girls Club for them to be in programs of work and study. Okay? So, I have, I have one or two young men in that program already. And that would, that happened about maybe a month ago. Because I, one thing that I said was, "You boys are not just boys. You boys are men." So, you either go work and pay for what we're paying or you go help me start funding some fundraising over here and do it. So, we know that those are things that we need to put in place. And, you know, your comment about them being men, it's true. They are men. They just have not been taught to be men. And that's what the club is helping to do that. There, I have right now, in the club, these young men. And I'm telling you, I've seen them grow. I've seen, in the little time that I've been there, I've seen these boys coming in with their hairs all beaded, with their walk. And you see them today and they're walking straight with no hair almost. And you say, "Is that the same boy?" And they all come to me and say, "Hi, Ms. Lilly," with the respect where before they were, "Huh." No. How are they doing that? They're learning. They're learning. Somebody did not take the time to teach these boys how to become men. And this club is doing that. In the little bit that we're doing, we're doing that. So, you know, how, I can't tell you that I, I hear you. And it's hard to, for me, to sit here and say that my little 17-year-old, and I'm saying 17-year-old, when he comes in, he's a man because he's not. He's a 17-year-old boy and I'm now seeing them grow into men.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Ricks. And counsel, I'll ask that we stick as much as possible to the prepared questions.
Well, I'd like to ask back to the counsel, counsel person Nicholas touched on the 501(c)(3). I'd like to know, who is your 501(c)(3) now? And do you have a current certificate?
Yes, and yes. Yes, I do have a current certificate. I have a certificate of good standing. And the 501(c)(3) is for the Laurel Boys and Girls Club. I have a copy of the, of the form that was given to us.
When did you acquire that?
That goes back to... Give me a minute. It's here. I didn't tell you. I brought a lot of papers, so give me one minute. That was back in April 23. Let me see. This is in response to your March 14, 2011 request for information regarding your tax exemption status. There's an ID number. This is the only thing I have.
More.
The records indicate that you are recognized as an exempt under Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code in a determination letter issued September 1969. So, it's been a 501(c)(3) since September 1969.
So, if in fact, you had that 501(c)(3) and it's still in effect, let's take for granted it is, why did you need a 501(c)(3) for the church?
I have no idea. I have no idea. That was before my time, so I have no idea.
You stated in the Laurel Leader today, in today's edition, that you provide academic support to the children. What does that mean and who's qualified to do that?
I have, me, Nancy. I've actually mentored children there.
Are you qualified to do that? Have you been trained?
I have, I'm an engineer. I have two master's degree. I have a coaching certificate. So, yes, I am qualified to do that.
Okay. Thank you. You say that you have playing basketball and that these children are young adults, if you will. How, again, does playing basketball in the prep program qualify them or attempt to qualify them for college?
It's more about the scholarships through the scouts. So, there's two pieces of going to college for these kids. It's the academic opportunity and it's the financial opportunity to go to these colleges without having to, anybody to sign up for a loan for them because they have no one to sign up. So, the opportunity that shows up is really about having the scouts come in and offer them scholarships for the entire bachelor's or associate's degree, bachelor's degree. That's the opportunity.
So, that being said, if you're, if the child in these programs, and you're saying there were eight, did all of them have college, I mean, excuse me, did all of them have high school or they, some of them didn't have high school?
They were all in, they were all, with the exception of one that I know of, they were all in high school.
So, that particular person didn't even have a GED?
No. That's the one that I've been tutoring. And that's the one that he's trying to get, take his GED.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to step over you.
He's scheduled to take the GED this month.
He is scheduled.
Yeah.
Okay. Wish him luck with that.
Me, too.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Crowe.
Mr. President, I hate to double-dip before you've had a chance to ask your question. Want to ask them?
Nope. You go ahead. I'll go next.
Okay. All right. We're having the election of the officers, correct?
That's correct.
Will this be by the board or will this be by general membership?
We actually had, we had, we had a meeting where we let everybody know through the website, through Facebook, that wanted to be part of the board. We had 25 people that were actually sign up to be part of the board. We had an open election, the entire community, and I had, we had 250 people vote one day. We invited the city to also participate. I invited them myself. They made some recommendations because I came here the week before and let them know what was happening. And I, they asked to see if maybe one thing we could do is have people at that meeting speak for about five minutes. And we did that. We had a log. People spoke about their, some were happy, some were not too happy with the club, what would they want to see improved, what would they not want to see improved. One of the board members suggested or brought up to our, all the board members, the, because there was 250 signatures that came up to the board to re-elect a new board. So, I said, "Let's listen to the community." We had a community meeting. And then in the community meeting, I said, "Somebody in the board said, 'I think we need a new reelection.'" And I said, "Okay, let's do that." So, that's when we moved forward. We got the 200, we got 25 people that wanted to be on the board. We had ballots. We had 250 people that showed up. And from the 250 people that showed up, there was 12 that were elected. That's what we call the board members. What we have not done yet is from those board members, elect because the executive board is nominated or appointed by the board. And that has not happened yet.
So, from that pool?
From the 25, 12, the ones that had the 12 highest votes got elected.
You'll choose an executive director?
It will, a president, a vice president, a secretary, a treasurer, and athletic director.
From my complement?
From my complement, yes.
Are you aware of the, the task force that met for quite some time at the city?
Oh, yeah. I know. I've memorized the report and I've, since April, I've been working towards this.
Very good.
From the incubator program to the, having a sound board to having, there's lots of recommendations. Solid financial footing, funds specific for programs, self-funding each program. So, being able to be a sustainable board, a sustainable club. That's really what it's all about. And I also have here, the task force also recommended things from the facility management. We, you know, we have a building that's falling apart and that's horrible. So, the building does not say the story of what the club really is. So, that's something else that we need to continue working on. About the Board of Directors. About the board of directors, um, we also have the relationship with the city, and that's something that I've been working with Chrissy and with, and with Mr. Craig Mo since I, since I, you know, came in the office. I've been here maybe four times. Every time there's a change, every time there's something new, I come here myself and let them know. So a lot of the recommendations are, are, for me, they're the future of the club. Um, and if you've read the minutes, um, all the minutes are, are pretty much supporting the recommendations.
Are any of these positions paid?
The only position that's paid is the, um, executive director, which becomes kind of the president of the club. Because we don't have any money, we have not paid anybody since like two thousand, I think like eleven, that I know of, or twelve.
Has nothing been entered in the quicken?
No.
The accounts?
No. So no one was paid two thousand thirteen. So who's been running that position, because my, Levitt Brown stepped out of all positions around June. So Harry Cox walked in as the athletic director, um, to take, the executive director to take that position. And Mr. Chappell, um, has been doing the athletic director position. That was some of the changes that happened with me in charge.
All right, if he left in June, I thought he left in April when you came in, unless I'm mixing up positions.
Well, there's a transition, because remember the, the, uh, the president, the president that steps down is, becomes the, the general, is part of the general board to help with the transition. So there's, you know, the club is, it's a big building, lots of programs, and I come from a profit-making. So for me, the whole board thing and the whole member, all that, I had to go take classes, because I, I didn't, I was not, I didn't know how to, what the, what a nonprofit meant. So I actually went and took some grant writing classes, I took some nonprofit classes, how to set it up. Um, how to, how to set it up in QuickBooks, because QuickBooks, nonprofit are different than a profit. So I had to go take a few classes myself to be able to-
I'm gonna ring you back to the question.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Sure.
Quick, and get a couple more in. The executive director, and when these people leave, do we get the keys back? Do we get the books back? Do we change the logs?
Everything, everything.
Have we done this?
No, because I do not have the executive board yet. It was done when I came on board. So all the president minutes, or all the, the, the keys were, were changed. I mean, I've seen all that happen already. But with the new board coming on board, that has not happened yet.
Okay. The books, they'll come back to the new treasurer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, um, just to clarify before, I guess, maybe I didn't, you said that Harriet Cox, Levitt Brown, and other people had access to the bank account. Were you just saying for deposits? Because then I heard you say-
For deposit, only one person has access to the bank.
The signing authority?
That's Mr. Levitt Brown.
Okay.
Harry Cox would only prepare, because she's in charge also of the leases. Uh, we brought all the leases back into place, um, and the Phelps Center, the same thing. So she prepares the, she prepares the, the deposit slips. We don't work with cash in the bank. We don't work with cash in the club. Everything is money orders or Visa, credit cards.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll have a follow-up question.
Yeah, let me just-
By Councilman Les, and then I'll ask my first round of questions.
The, um, so Mr. Brown is the executive director now? When the new board comes in, what happens to the executive director?
The executive, um, okay, so we do not have an executive director. Yeah, yeah. What he was telling me is that the, right now, the executive director is Ms. Harry Cox. Until, until we get the new board in place, okay? So the, like, right now, I'm acting as, as president, right? Because I have not elected, there has not been an election yet for a president. So Ms. Harry Cox is still in place, because we have, we do not have an executive director yet. The new board will elect the executive director. I do not know who that person is, it's not in the pool of twelve people, okay? We have, and we, the, I mean, sorry, we have the athletic, athletic director will be elected by the, by the twelve. The executive director, the, 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 the board will elect that person. I don't have that person. Right now, the acting executive director as part of the old board is Harry Cox.
Okay, so the, so there's been some misrepresentation in the media about Mr. Brown being the executive director? I'm just asking a question.
Mr. Brown-
I'm trying to figure out who's on first today.
Hey, no, and I'm telling you who's on first. Right now, like I said, we're in, we're in a transition, right now, as of today, present. There is, Nancy Lilly is acting as a president.
I understand that.
Because the board of twelve people have not elected a president.
I understand that too.
The same thing with the, Mrs. Cox have been working as the executive director since probably, let me see, I, I came in in April, like, since May. May or June is when Ms. Cox walked in as the executive director. Mr. Levitt has not been, he has not had any running positions.
That's why I get confused, because when I go to the web, there's a page out there that says, Mr. Brown-
Yeah, the web is not up to date.
It's listing you as president, and-
The web is not up to date, and I just want to tell you that. I could tell you what, what's happening right now, and that's, that's, and that's, you know, that's true. Mr. Brown walked out on all positions. He said, I do not want to be executive director, I do not want to be president, I don't want to be-
And what date was that?
That was around maybe, I have to go back specific, but it's around the May-June timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Cox, I'm sorry.
It's Cam Iner, she's a wonderful woman.
ISMA stated that no students or individuals-
Excuse me, Mr. President, follow up to what was said.
To what was said about-
Is Mrs. Cox resigned from her position?
No. Mrs., okay, let me, okay, let me, let me clear it up.
I want to clear it up.
I want to-
I mean, hearing that she's quit, and you're saying she's still on board.
Mrs., okay, we, like I said, there was a general election. Mrs. Cox was running as part of the general, as part of the, of the twenty-five people. Ms. Harry Cox was running. She did not get elected, she's not part of the twelve, okay? So, yes, she does know that her position, I asked, she said, Nancy, if I was not elected, then I need the next person to step in and take this job. And I said, and who is that next person? I said, I have, I have five meetings, three meetings, that I need answers, and I need support. So I, I will ask you to please stay in that position. Yes, she did say, that same day of the election, Mrs. Cox packed up. And she said, Nancy, I feel that I'm not wanted here, I'm gonna pack up and leave. I, I actually took her boxes out of her car and said, Harry, I need you right now. Until we get through all these meetings, and we get through the executive board, and we get the right people on the right place, because the, 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 the members want it, I need you to stay right there. Because until that person gets elected, we're still it. I mean, if I would have said, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm out, because there's now twelve people, then that included me too. And I would not be sitting here talking to you, because we don't have an executive, we don't have a president as of right now.
Okay, now, the follow-up to this. Mr. Brown is not in the executive position anymore.
That's correct.
How does he have the authority to keep the checkbook?
Right.
And the pen, and the bank account?
Yes.
And the credit cards, or the debit cards, and all that? What, what authority gives him to that?
Because there is a transition period for everything. And the transition period for the banking piece has not occurred yet. I mean, like I tell you, I've been through a serious learning curve in, in being where I am today. And I could, I feel very comfortable of saying that I know where I am today. But when I started, I had to understand what the bylaws meant. I had to go and ask and compare bylaws with clubs, and compare, and, and who's, who are you all? And what, what is it that that means for the club? And understand the position of the city. I was, and under, fundraising, go to the councils, speak to the council members, that all, and I, and I, you know, I have four girls that I have, and I have a full-time job, I'm the CEO and the president. So if, you know, the transition period of that happening has not happened yet, that's all, that's the only reason.
Try it from this side sometime.
Well, I, I'm, you know, I, if you want to say it's, it's, you know, it, it had to be, I, I, I did not put it in the front to say, okay, I'm doing it today. But man, I, I, every week I schedule it with Mr. Levitt. Every Friday, Nancy, we're gonna meet at PNC Bank, and I'd have to call him, I can't do it, Levitt, today, let's do it this other day. So part of it, it was just, it's, it's just life continues, and here I am. But it will happen. He doesn't want it, actually.
President. Any other follow-on question? Before I start again?
I did work it to your question.
Yeah, let me get to my question, um, and I know there'll be follow-ons to that one. Uh, it's been stated, Ms. Lilly, that no students or individual, other individuals, uh, have lived in the building.
When you say building-
I think you know the building, the Boys and Girls Club.
The, the big building.
As, as a building, Boys and Girls Club on the property. As, as I'm sure you're aware, everyone in this room is, is certainly, I'm sure, aware that the I-Team report revealed that there were in fact, uh, people living in the, in the building, on the property. Who made the decision to, to house, uh, individuals in the building?
Mr. Levitt Brown made that decision.
Can you tell us why?
Well, I think it was more, um, what I was told, because when I came in, in April, I had, we had people living in the annex. We had the, a few of the kids for the Laurel Prep School living in the, in the, in the annex with a, a couple, a husband and wife couple, that were taking care of these kids. They were, they were responsible of, of their, of their dinners, their food, um, just kind of a family. And what I was told is that the annex was, um, was zone R fifty-five, which is residential. I have the, I have the, the actual, um, um, tax property, because I, I pulled it out myself. And it does say residential on it, so I said, okay. And then there were, um, and I, I came to the city, and I asked, is this legal? Because I wasn't quite sure if it was legal, I didn't, I was, you know, and they said, no, Ms. Lilly, it's not. So the next day, I had the city come in and evict everybody in the annex, and I was there. I was there when every, every child had to leave. And, um, those kids right now, some of them are with their host families. One of them is actually living with Ms. Cox, she's almost, she's brought him into his house, her house. So I, the kids are, are now with different families, host families.
And the purpose for those kids living in the building on the property was exactly what? They had nowhere else?
They were homeless.
They were homeless. And, and what was their purpose there? That is, were you just providing residence, were they part of the Laurel Prep Academy?
They were part of the Laurel Prep Academy.
Counsel, any follow-on questions? If none, I'll go to-
Mr. President, Mr. President, let me just, that wasn't the first time. Previous, you're, you're aware that previously, there were people living in the building, and on the premises.
That I don't know, I, I mean, I don't understand that.
Well, it was in the media, I mean, it was all, it was, you know, it was in the media. This was not the first time. And the, and the fire marshal went over there from the city, said, you can't live like this, because there was extension cords, it was unsafe, is what it was.
Since April fourteen, I took over, I assure that no one was living in the building. I actually had the person that came in and looked at the, um, the annex at that time, he walked in through the building to make sure that there was no one else living in it. So as of right now, under my knowledge, there is no one living in the building.
I understand, I'm just making you aware that this was not the first time.
I understand.
Previously, there was a situation that occurred where we had, the city had to tell them, you can't do that. Now, those two young men, if I remember correctly, or however many there were, they were playing basketball too. Okay? So all I'm saying is, we need to make sure that these young men are safe.
I agree.
That there's a youth and occupancy permit, and it meets all the life safety issues.
Yeah, I agree.
And I don't know about the R fifty-five, I'd have to go look at that. But again, I, it just, it just, we cannot provide homes when the building is not set up for it, for homeless people.
I agree, I agree, I agree a hundred percent.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I have, I have, trust me, I, I support you on that a hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lilly.
Mm-hmm.
Given the fact that we now know that there were five youth and one couple living in the annex, what were the living arrangements and the ages of the people involved?
Um, well, one of the, the couple actually had one of his sons in there.
Had what?
One of the kids was the son, that's how this couple came, because one of the boys was the son that was in the prep program of this couple. All the rest of the kids were eighteen, nineteen-year-olds. They're all eighteen, nineteen.
And what were the living arrangements?
They lived in, there were four, four rooms, four small rooms. Um, and in the room, they had little beds, and they had a, a big table for dinner. And then there, there was another area that had couches and, um, computers and one TV. So it was, the, the annex is set up as a house. I mean, physically, it's set up like a house. It was, what I understand, and this I understood from the guy that did the inspection, I forgot his name, once upon a time, it was set up as a, um, a nursing home for, I don't know-
Senior daycare.
Senior daycare. So it's really set up with a kitchen is right in the center, so, you know, the, the, the couple, um, the husband worked, so he would help to pay for the food. So it was really, it was set up as a family, that's the way it was set up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Mills, I, Ms. Lilly, I'll give you a chance to take a bit of a break. If we could get Mr. Coe, our fire marshal, uh, since we're talking about the building itself, I, I'd like to have our fire marshal come in-
That'd be great.
And talk a little bit about, uh, his assessments.
Mm-hmm, yep, not a problem.
Can I ask a question to the-
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, I'm just trying to understand something that I'm still stuck on. Um, you, you stated that Mr. Levitt resigned from all positions, is that correct?
That's correct.
So if he has resigned from all positions and has no involvement, how is it that he still controls the bank account of the club?
Because I have not taken the time to transition that function, that's all. I mean, it was not that he didn't let me, he gave me all the, he gave me everything, I just have not had the time to, to make that transition happen.
So, in the meantime, is he writing checks for bills and?
Yeah, and I, you know, I see the state, I see the, I see the bank statement, I see the, the, um, we have some mortgages that are, we have a mortgage that is outstanding, so I see the payments on the liabilities. I see when the, when the bills come in, the water bill comes in, the electric bill comes in, the, the monitoring system comes in, all the bills that are coming in, I see all those bills. I work directly with Mrs. Cox. So Mrs. Cox and I work directly on the bills and everything that's coming in. We make sure that they get paid. We started, when I started, I started with a thirty thousand dollar water bill. That has gone down, we're down to, I think, six thousand that we owe, or ten thousand. So we've been paying, we've been paying every bill, we've been making sure that that water and that light is on all the time.
Okay, my last question about that is, so you've been in this position since April?
That's correct.
It's now July, three months have passed. When do you intend to take over the bank account?
I think I answered this question, but I'll say it again. At this point, I am going to wait for the new, for the new president to take over that function, okay? We could do it, we could do it two ways, and I have not decided yet. I could do the transition from Mr. Levitt completely to me, and then I transition everything again to the, to the new board. The new board will be in place within the next two weeks. So- So do I wanna go to the bank and change signatures twice in two, in, in two weeks? I'm not sure I wanna do that. So that's, that's one of the reasons why, right now. We were planning to do it about two months ago, but this whole thing started, and I said, let's just, let's just wait and see.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Since some of our previous question, or one of our previous questions dealt with the building itself, I'd like Mr. Cope, who's the city fire marshal, and who has the responsibility of doing code inspections in our buildings, to just talk a little bit about his experiences with the Boys and Girls Club building.
Actually, I was there today to do another inspection for Mr. Crawford's facility downstairs, and it did fail. It seems like every time I go there, there's problems within the building. Today, I was there, and Mr. Crawford had six violations that he's working on. And one of the major ones I was concerned about was a fuel-fired equipment that was kept in right outside his door. Lawn mowers was kept in there, still had gas in it. Some of the other problems I have down there is a fire alarm system. When the fire alarm goes off, it's required to be monitored, and it hasn't been monitored. So when I did their inspection for their camp, which at right now, I've disapproved their camp, their summer camp program they're running, because this program has not been approved, and they continue to run the program. I've also notified the state, but the state has pretty much put that back in our hands. It's not being monitored. They're supposed to maintain a 24-hour watch. Ms. Harriet, Ms. Cox, we've talked to her about it. She is dillin' G, working on the problems, trying to get them done, but all these calls, you know, all this costs money. And when I've done the inspection of the building, I've only been limited to the areas that Mr. Brown wanted me to get access to, or what I needed to see. If I was doing the day camp, they would devise me, they used the blue room in the gym, that's the two areas I would inspect. When I was doing their kitchen, I didn't inspect the Phelps Center, I only inspected the kitchen. And it was, and I always, whenever I had to make an appointment or go there, I always had to notify Mr. Brown ahead of time. I was not allowed to just pop in and do an inspection. Had to be always of an appointment. And no matter what it was, it was always an appointment. And if I was in there, apparently they have cameras, and when I was in there, and there was nobody there, I turned around and leave, and I think a phone call would come to the city, why, why, why was I in the building without notifying the president? So, overall condition of the building, it needs major repairs.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Cope? The reason that we're, we're bringing up the obvious condition of the building, again, is so that the public is, is aware of exactly what the building conditions are. But it's important to understand as well that, you know, the city has been willing, continues to be willing, to work with the Boys and Girls Club as you work to take care of those issues. We understand and realize that funding is an issue for the club. So there are, of course, certain violations, code violations, that, that can't be ignored. And if, if the regulations require certain things to be shut down, then we, we're obligated to do so. But I, I, I just wanted Mr. Cope to kind of help put things into our perspective, so that it's, the folks are made aware. Yes, sir.
Actually, and you're saying there's only one time somebody's been caught sleeping in there, well, there's actually two. Mr. Russo had called us one time, they had a man that was living in it, was driving a cab, and Mr. Russo wanted him removed, and which we did, and we gave them a correction, where this man was no longer allowed to live in there. I'm not sure, he came in and gave, talked to the city and wrote a full, but there was actually two times that ever notified that the people were in the building, living in the building, and the third time was in the annex outside.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cope. That leads me, Ms. Lilly, to a question. Given what the conditions have been described, and, you know, you know all too well, what the conditions of the building are, was the Board of Directors, either past or present, made aware of St. Mary's offer to purchase the building?
I heard that, and, you know, when I stepped in on April 14, I heard about it. And when I stepped in, the task force was going on. So there was a lot of talks. I never saw an official offer. I never saw who in St. Mary's was, was putting this. So I took it as everything else. Somebody said, somebody said it.
So there are no records and any meeting minutes of the Board of Directors or anything that even that, that subject was, was brought up?
Not that I, not that I know of.
Okay.
I mean, previous to me, I might have to go pull the book, you know, 10 years, but previous to me, no. There was no, I don't have, I just heard words that St. Mary's was interested. And St. Mary's was one of our tenants for many, you know, till this summer, till this school year. So that's all I knew.
I understand. Okay, thank you. We'll go back to questioning. I'll start with Councilwoman Ladd.
Thank you. Let me just, are you aware of the report from the Maryland Historical Trust on the condition of the building?
Yes, sir.
Do you understand the ramifications of that report? They can, in fact, take action.
Yes, well, yes, I know the ramifications, and I've, I've, what we've been doing is, one of the things that, that is on that report is all of the landscaping around the building, the piece that has fallen off. So we've taken action. We've been working around the building to knock off all the ivy. We've hired people. We are in partnership with the correctional community. So we've had some of the folks also help us with that, so we've been using them. So if you have not been around the club for a while, I, I suggest you go over there and start seeing some of that happening. It's just, it's enormous building. It takes a lot of effort to do a little piece. But I could say that I'm starting to see some changes.
Okay.
The, um, we move to the next question, if I can, Mr. President.
Yes, please, go ahead.
What outstanding financial obligations does the club have and to who?
We have two liabilities right now. We have a mortgage that was done once upon a time against the building, and the, the balance is for, I believe it's $200-some thousand that we're paying, so it's a loan.
That's PNC, correct?
Yeah, that's PNC. We just finished actually paying the, the bus, so that one is, is gone. Then we have a credit card that, that we closed, it was closed before I started the club, that has a balance of like $6,000 that we're paying. Those are the only two liabilities that I know. All the other things are operational.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Nichols?
Um, question. You, you had stated earlier that the credit card was closed because that was in Mr. Brown's name?
No, it was under another member, board member, that is no longer part of the club.
So the balance is not a liability for the club, the person who's on the credit card, they, you don't have to pay that?
Yeah, but we're, we're paying it.
Okay. Can you tell me, how much was Levitt Brown paid as the executive director?
Zero. He was never paid.
And can you give me a little bit more clarity on when he actually resigned?
He resigned like in May-June of 2014.
Was there, is there a resignation letter on file that he submitted?
No. There's no resignation letter on file.
Okay. Can you tell me what was Adrian Russo's position?
Adrian Russo, for a while, he was the athletic director, security, and he was also the driver for the summer camp, for the camp, or for the after-program.
Athletic director, security, and?
Driver.
And how much was he paid for those positions?
Um, you would have to ask me what year. So for 2014, that I know of, nothing. For 2013, nothing. Before that, I'd have to go look, look at the books.
Okay. What was, what is Adrian Cox's position?
You mean Harry?
Harry, I'm sorry.
Harry started as, in April, she started as the VP of Operation. And then in June, we moved her to the executive director when Mr. Brown stepped down.
And how much was she paid?
Nothing. She was never paid.
And she's currently still on staff?
Until we get, we get the next board in place with the executive board and the, and the election of the executive director, because right now, she's helping me with all the functions of the executive director. No one has, I have no one else.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Next round, Councilwoman Ricks.
Do you know what your current income-to-debt ratio is?
Um, I wrote it down. My expenses are higher than my income, I know that. My monthly expenses as of right now are around $19,467. And to that, I have to add some yearly expenses that are around $20,000. Because my yearly are my, my audit, my, my tax stuff that I have to do every year. I have, let me see. I have it all here. Like I said, you, I have copies of everything that I've said. So if you want copies, I have it all here. Give me one minute. So I have yearly expenses are my website and my CPA, my Prince Rogers County tax, my accountant, my, um, let me see what else, boiler inspection, my mem, board member liability insurance, membership fees for Prince Rogers County, they're annual, my Laurel Fuel Oil, that's annual, and my sports signup is annual. So that all totals to around $20,000. So my monthly expense is around $38,934. My income is close to like $20-some thousand.
Your income is $20,000, and your monthly expense is $20,000 per month. So where does the other $19,000 come in from?
No, again, my monthly expense is around, it's $19,467. That's my monthly expense, okay?
You just added $20,000.
Right, the $20,000, so to the, I take the 20, added to the, to the month, that's $38,934.
Per month.
Per month, right. And my income is coming from the Phelps Center, my leases, my donations, my membership fees. Those are the incomes that are coming in right now.
And that's $20,000.
That's around 25, 26. It's close to that.
So where does the deficit come from?
The deficit right now is in donations. So the donations are, I, I've donated some money, some board members have donated some money. That's where it's, 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 it's a, it's a hard one.
You're operating in the?
I, 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 so one of the, one of the things that I instituted in, in April was a fundraising committee. I have a fundraising strategy. I have a, I, I have a, my friend Carol Nash was taking over that. She had people already that she was meeting with, and when, when we started with all this, we had to put everything on hold. So it's, it's been, we have the, the vision. I have the vision. We have the vision. I know what I need. But the fundraising is something, because we need to be sustainable. We need to be sustainable. If not, we cannot exist. Because every month, it's, you know, you know how it is. Every month, you're figuring out, how am I gonna pay the water? You know, so I have some outstanding bills that I have not paid yet. So I, I, yeah, I, I do have financial problems, and, and that the fundraising is what becomes very essential to us. So I'm, I'm gonna work with the, the new committee, the new board, to make sure that the fundraising committee becomes a very strong piece of the club.
I think it's an essential piece.
Oh, it's, oh, yeah, yeah.
Councilwoman Ladd?
Tell me, you, you mentioned that St. Mary's was renting space in the facility, but that's ended, is that correct?
That's correct.
How big a hold did that create on a monthly basis? What was the monthly rent?
The monthly went, rent was $3,000, $2,300, if I'm not mistaken. I'll tell you one minute.
That just ended, is that correct?
That just ended, yes. So what we've done is accountability for every tenant that I have in the, in the building. So every tenant now is under a lease. Every tenant has been requested also a occupancy permit with the city, so the areas could be inspected. That's why Mr. Crawford, you know, it, it, I, I don't mind when Mr. Cook says that he founds violations, because all that could be corrected. I like, not that I like violations, but I like to know that he went in the building and, and spoke to Mr. Crawford. So we had a, we had a, we had a, a meeting this week with all my tenants. And the, and, you know, a lot of them are actually here as tenants. And the same thing, letting them know that the permits have to be there, the fees have to be there, the inspections have to be there, and that the, the under-lease and the payments have to be there, for the sake of the club and the sake of the kids, because we depend on those. The Phelps Center, the same way. We had, we, we put lease agreements in place. We decided to control the expenses that were on the security piece, on the setup piece. So we became more, more lean on the expenses. So more money's coming in from the, from the, from the Phelps Center. The Phelps Center, right now, as an income, is bringing, bringing us in around $3,600 a month, just the Phelps Center. And it's, you know, it takes people to run it. In the past, we were paying people to run it. Now volunteers are running it.
Let me come back to, to the expense and then the income piece. One, just one additional. You mentioned that you pay tax to Prince Rogers County. Isn't that abated every year? The same as the city abates their tax to you?
A percentage of it gets abated.
What are you talking about? The unrelated business income tax?
We pay, we pay about $1,000-some dollars to the city, to the, to the, I don't know.
County, unrelated business income tax. You also pay, is that, that shows up on your 990 return?
Yes.
Okay, and you have to pay a tax on that, too. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, but you're not paying any, I remember the county was abating the tax, and we're abating tax. We have to do that every year? Every budget, we have to do that.
Right.
And that's still happening. The only thing you're paying, then, is the unrelated business income.
That's correct.
For example, running the Phelps Center, things like that. Okay, all right, just wanna clarify that. Thank you.
Here.
Follow-up?
Go ahead.
Ms. Lilly, you're a businesswoman.
Mm-hmm.
Just what you just told me, you're $192,000 a year in the hole.
Mm-hmm.
Does that sound like a good business decision to you?
Well, you know, I have, I work for, I work as a contractor for the government. So what did I do three weeks ago? I laid off seven people. Seven people. Why? For the sake of all the rest of the people that I have there. So yes, no, it's not a viable business. No, we cannot continue running that way. Yes, we need to put things in place to make it viable and to make it run.
Does it make any sense to you to get rid of the building and run your programs out of something else?
If I had a better building? Because the club, the priority of the club is the programs. I'm not in real estate, and I'm, and I, and I.
But you must recognize, and not, not be an argument, but you must recognize that the building is building is what's dragging you all down.
The building is a big liability. I agree with you. With the, if I had a building that was not falling apart, and I think any of you, if you had a building that was not falling apart, you would not have to worry about the building. But the building is falling apart. That's all I have, right? It's like home. If I have a home that needs repairs, I'm not, I can't go and, and go buy another house, so I have to repair my house. So as long as we can, we will find a way of repairing the building. What's my priority? It's, it's the programs. But right now, in order to have income coming in, I need to have tenants. If I have tenants, I have to assure that they have heat, that they have air conditioning, and they have a safe place to be. So it's like a catch-22 almost right now. So yes, my priority are the programs. If I have, if I had a place for the, for the Laurel Boys and Girls to run, that they could have a gym, and the kids could have a safe place to go, I would have the place.
Has the club ever considered selling the building?
I don't know. I, I was in there. I haven't, I haven't had time to even go in that conversation, to tell you the truth. I mean, for, right now, it could, we could look at that as a possibility. I'm not, I, you know, with the new board in place, they could look at that as a possibility. But from my, from my point, you know, since April till now, it's been the operation side of the building, the bringing income in, making programs that are self-funded, making programs that are strong. On my direction was, we are not bringing any other programs in until these programs become strong enough to live by themselves. And that's been the direction we've been taking in the club since I've been in.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Councilwoman McCrory.
Did you say the bus was gone?
The loan. The loan is gone.
That scares me.
No, the bus is still there, and we're paying insurance. No, the loan is gone. So we just paid off that loan. It feels good when you pay off a loan.
It does, it does, yeah.
Can I ask a question to that?
Sure.
The bus is registered into who?
Laurel Boys and Girls Club.
Okay.
My next question is, if you would tell us, Ms. Lilly, what youth programs are running at the club this summer?
We have Transitional Zone, which is a summer program that is sponsored by the Maryland National Park every year. They provide the lunches. They provide the, the training for all the counselors. So that program has been running in the, in the Laurel Boys and Girls for many years. And then the other one that, that we've had in partnership, so the club is not running any programs, to answer your question.
Okay.
It's been in partnership with some of the tenants that we have, period. So Transitional Zone is a tenant, and they're running the summer program. Bernadette's House is a tenant, and they're running a, a junior achievement program. So it's not, they're not, the, the club, as a club, is not running anything during the summer. You asked the summer.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Councilwoman Lott?
Let me pass at this point. I already said earlier that you're gonna have the new board convene and elect an executive board within two weeks, is that correct?
That's correct. I'm going to Puerto Rico next week, and that's why. We were gonna have that election today. That was, that was...
Okay, within two weeks, that's gonna happen. At that point, the...
President, the Vice President, the Secretary...
They go down to PNC.
Yes.
Along with you and Mr. Brown.
That's correct.
And they'll sign the signature cards, correct?
Exactly right.
And delete people off the signature cards.
Yes, yes. That's...
Okay, that'll include the debit card and the bank accounts.
Everything, everything that has to do with the bank.
And at that point, you're gonna turn the books over to the new board, is that correct?
To the new board, that's correct. Hundred percent.
Including the password to get into the QuickBooks.
Yes, everything, everything. There's a transition. We're actually planning a, I haven't told the new board members, only a few, but Mrs. Carol Nash, her experience is in facilitator training. So we're planning a, a retreat, call it a retreat for the new board, for unification, for transition. It's gonna be on a Saturday all day to help put them all together and transition all this. So to, just to make it quicker instead of bits and pieces.
That's after you get back from Puerto Rico.
That's why, yeah.
But then two weeks?
For what? Yeah, in two weeks. So my dad is, my dad has cancer, so taking him out there one last time.
Okay.
Councilwoman Nicholas?
Um, you said earlier, when I asked you about the Laurel Prep Academy, that there was one kid that passed, and one kid is doing online, he's doing online courses. Oh, he's at a community college, you told me. So the kids that did not show interest or are not participating in the three licenses that you purchased, what happens to those kids? You talked about, they play basketball, a scout comes and they're ment, they're mentored. So what, what happened to those kids? Are they still presently being mentored, or?
They're being mentored. They actually, almost all of them, they finish up their, their classes at their local school, the local high school. And, and I have four, four to five kids that are actually in the Howard Community College right now, being sponsored with scholarships.
And this is four out of the eight?
Out of the eight. So, okay, again, I have eight kids that were in the program.
Okay.
Okay. Four kids are Howard Community College-sponsored with scholarships from the NCAA that came in, scouted and all that stuff. So they finished their high school degree, and they, and they were able, through the athletic department, athletic and, from Laurel Boys and Girls Club, be able to get in and participate and pursue their college degrees. One child was completely kicked out of the program because he didn't want to do the school, he didn't want to do the, the academics, he didn't want to do the playing. So he completely was, was removed from the program. I have one child right now that's in the, that's finishing his GED.
Okay.
And as soon as he finishes GED, he's gonna apply to a, to a college. He has not been sponsored, so he'll probably have to get a loan or work or something. And that's it. Those are my, those are all my kids.
Okay, you said eight total, correct?
Eight total.
Okay, so I've counted four, five, six, seven. I've lost one.
You've lost one.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, you know, you talked about the diversity of the kids, and some of them come from all different types of backgrounds. And I recognize that because I'm very involved in the community myself. So I'm concerned about the ones that didn't show interest, how, what, what initiative are you taking to make sure that they don't get lost in the sauce?
I have one child that is still in high school. So he's, he's in high school right now. He's gonna go to either, I think it's third year of high school right now. Harry, Henry. His name is Henry. I know him well.
And the mentoring program, who, I mean, are they in a program that's sponsored by the club, or are there, do they have individual mentors? I'm trying to understand, what is the mentoring program?
What I understand, and this is, you know, it's, the coaches become their mentors. The coaches in the basketball program become their mentors.
Okay, so they become their mentors to them individually, or as a group? Are they having like group field trips? Are they meeting with them on a regular basis?
The, the practices start after school, because it's a, it's an after-school program.
Okay.
So the practices start after school. And then in the practices, you know, they, they have time to, to play, they have time to go out to tournaments. So during that, all that period, they're working with those coaches in different ways. Sometimes it's as an individual, sometimes it's at, it's at a group. It's, it's not, I don't, I, I don't know of any formal mentoring program that I, that I've seen since I've been there. The only mentoring program that I know are the coaches that have been there, that are working with the kids in different ways. And it, sometimes it is as an individual, and sometimes it's, it's, it's at, as a group. But I don't know of any official, that's something that the new board will put in, and it's also a recommendation from the, from the task force for the Laurel Boys and Girls Club, to partner with the city through the, what they call the Laurel Area Youth Service Commission, to create mentoring programs where we could take kids from the Laurel High School and develop them into mentors to mentor these kids. So that's an, that's an opportunity that's out there for the club.
Okay, this is my final question. I'm, I'm just trying to understand the success. You can't just, you know, you spend time with the kids, I understand that. But how are you measuring the success of the mentoring? I mean, to take somebody out, or you said the coaches mentor them, are you monitoring that? Are there any, do you have like a progress report? Are you documenting, you know, the improvements? I mean, is there an official program to where you are following up with these kids?
One of the things that I do, that we do, and we have that in file, is every child, every time the grades come in, the grades go to Ms. Harry Cox. So she keeps a file of all the kids on their academics. Because if they don't keep up with their academics, they can't graduate. So keeping up with the academics, so we have the files. When the kids come in, we get all the transcripts of all the kids. They give permission, the parents give us permission to get transcript of all the kids, to see what their GPA is, to see, to see where their weaknesses are. We talk to the, to the, the, like, for example, the Prince, Princeton Academy. We talk to the school and make sure that, we tell them, you know, that the kid is, is failing math. How are we gonna help them? Because we're not a school. We can't, the only thing we could do is offer them online classes, offer them tutoring, which I've done. I've tutored kids there myself in math and science. We brought a STEM program in for, open to all the kids on the science and math, because that's what, the science reading and math is where they're having more problems. So we brought the STEM program in to help out. We partnered with University of Maryland to, to bring the STEM program in for the kids to benefit. So those are the opportunities that we have. And it's about, you know, to tell you the truth, the difference is that we're seeing, we're seeing that child. You know, a lot of these kids are not seen. And by seeing them, they become a different person. It's like, you see the transformation, because you're seeing the child. When you walk in, and you know that child by name, and you, and you look at them in their face, and you say, "Good morning." And they don't get that at home, that child will turn around. And we see that child every day. Every day after school, we see that child by name. "Hey, how did you do in school today? Where's your backpack? Let me see your homework." I've sat down with these kids. "Let me see your homework. You didn't do your Spanish homework. I know Spanish. I will help you with your Spanish homework." Accountability. They, they're, like you said, they're young men. But no one has taught them accountability, and that's, that's part of what everybody there does. Ask them. "Where's your homework? Did you do your homework? Let me see it."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're, we're coming into the home stretch.
Oh, not a problem.
I've asked Mr. Lottsky to come in. Mr. Lottsky is our Director of Parks and Recreation. And I'd like Mr. Lottsky to talk a little bit and go on record about some of the in-kind services and support that his department, as well as the city overall, has provided over the years to the Boys and Girls Club, to just kind of give us a perspective of the kinds of partnerships that we've worked to establish with the club over the years.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smalls. Well, I guess, not going back too far in history, but when the city owned or leased the Phelps Center from the Boys and Girls Club, for example, during that time, the Boys and Girls Club was, was able to provide programs over in the facility that we managed during that time period. The Bingo Program, a lot of the sports banquets, those type of things. So just starting from that standpoint. But then you, when you break out into the, the Athletic Fields, McCullough Field and, and Cypress Street Field, even the Armory Gymnasium for a period of time, they were, we were partnered with them in running programs out of those facilities. Currently, we're still partnering with them at McCullough Field to, to provide them free access for their spring, summer, and fall activities. And we're currently partnering, partnering with them right now with the day camp program, or sports camp program that they provide, in giving them some reduced rates for access to the, to the pool, to the Laurel Municipal Pool three days a week. So we, we've, we've partnered with them on quite a few things. We try to make the, the facilities available to them as much as we can. And, you know, and they're serving the community just like we are, so.
And it's been stated many times that this relationship is, is a much-needed relationship between both the city and the Boys and Girls Club, in that the city has programs that we hope help complement some of the programs that the Boys and Girls Club, or some of the initiatives that the Boys and Girls Club runs. That's been sort of blurred over the years, and it's certainly my hope that we start to reinforce some of those relationships with the new board.
Yep, I agree.
As we all move forward. That's completed. My questions, counsel, if you have no more questions. Okay, Councilman Ricks?
The bus. How often is the bus used?
The bus during the summer is not used, because we, we don't do, we, the, well, let me see. Not sure, because during the day, I'm not there. The, the kids go to the pool twice, twice a week. I have, I have like thirty-some kids. And I'm not sure if they're using the bus for that, to tell you the truth. So I've never, the only time that I've seen the bus used is like in tournaments, when they have tournaments, that they take the, the players to games. But other than that, I don't, it's usually parked there.
So the tournaments, how often do we run tournaments during the winter season, the basketball?
I don't know, to tell you the truth. That's an area that I still need to learn on the program side.
Thank you.
Councilwoman McCrory?
I'm fine, thank you.
Councilwoman Lott?
I'm fine, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Nicholas?
Mr. Smalls, I'm not sure from my notes if Mr. Cope stressed it or not, but when we have made inspections down there, we have been very firm on life safety, fire code issues.
Great, thank you, that's a good point. Ms. Lilly, any closing comments?
I do want to thank you for allowing the opportunity of being here, because I needed for you to know our, the story of what we've done so far. You know, it, the, for me, the, when you said that you were shocked, I was crying. I was sad, because, you know, we've worked so hard in little bits, because it just takes, it takes, it takes a lot to kind of put the world together again. And when I saw that, it was, it was a, it was sadness more than anything. Because, yes, maybe an intention of this program started with one way. And since I've been there, I know that it's been running as a program, not as a school. And, and then to see that the little bit that we had done in one show just kind of crumbled down, because we took ten steps and then took, you know, twenty steps back. And here we are, because I know that we all care about the club. If not, and I appreciate you, Mr. Small, so much, for taking the initiative and putting this meeting together. Because this shows the commitment of all of us towards our kids. And I say our kids, and I say my kids, because for every kid that dies, or every kid that something happens, it's my child, and I'll cry for it. That's my calling. I, I thought I used, I, I thought I was crazy when I, when I would cry about any, any child dying. And I've had at least fifty kids go through my house, foster care. My fourth child is an adopted child from foster care. So I have the heart for that. And seeing so many people in this room sharing the same heart just gives me hope. So I really appreciate you putting this together and taking the time to do this, and to listen to what we have done so far, and what we still, this what it does, it just opens opportunities for the future. It opens more opportunities of what else we need to do that we have not done. And I do want to go in partnership, and I'm asking everybody here that is part of our, of our board to know that being in partnership with all of us here is the only way we're gonna... going to move forward.
I agree. Now, I can't take credit for, for putting this together. This was an effort by the entire council. But I want to say that I appreciate the work that you are doing with, with our youth, the members of your Board of Directors, former members of Board of Directors. While there have been some things, certainly, that have been not the most flattering for the Boys and Girls Club, I realize, and I, I'm sure my colleagues will agree with me, that there's a lot of heart in the Boys and Girls Club. There have been some misdirection. I don't think anyone would disagree with that. But I've realized for quite some time, there's, there's a lot of heart there in the club. And, you know, as a, as a point of privilege, colleagues, I, I certainly want to say that as an African-American male, to see the men who are, if you want to call them mentors formally, they certainly play a positive role in the lives of our young men. I'm not excluding girls, but I'm, I'm speaking about men in this case, young men. They play a positive role with many of the young men. I've had associations with the club long before I was a member of the City Council. I've had my grandkids and kids come up through the Boys and Girls Club over the years. So there are ver, there are a lot of very fine people associated with the club. And I think many of those people realize what, now certainly, what the city is, has been working to do. I think some of the veils have been lifted, are beginning to be lifted, so that people are seeing that the city has honestly been trying for many years to maintain a relationship, a positive relationship with the Boys and Girls Club. Tonight's a step in that direction. We hope that we can continue this dialogue. We'd like, it's been asked by a couple of our board, or rather, council members, that perhaps we look to do this on a regular basis, maybe not in such a formal fashion, but that we do take the opportunity to routinely sit down and talk about ways that the city can help the club advance, particularly under new leadership.
I agree. I agree a hundred percent, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Give me a quick admittance, too.
Absolutely.
I think, Ms. Lilly, the, the candor that you bring to the job, it's, it's a shame from this perspective that you're not going to be in that chair to carry it forward.
Thank you.
But I can understand the pressure that you've been through. I think you should be applauded, and I'll do it right now.
Thank you, thank you so much.
For the things that you have done.
Thank you.
That's what. Thank you very, very much, and God bless you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Bless your family.
Thank you.
Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your partnership with the club.